Okay, erected attendance, we're good. Declarations of a conflict of interest, anyone? And approval of agenda with the additions and deletions. And we've got the request from Sarah Corning, letters of condolence, requests for proposals, vacant buildings, the tender, and the returning officer re- enumeration, eleven A to F. Oh, please let this work.
Thank you, your worship. I don't see, and I don't know how that comes under business arising, is a notice of motion from last meeting?
Okay. Yes, I remember that.
So is that, that's gonna be through the committee of the hall then? Because it made a notice of motion for the next regular council meeting, but you must have brought it to the committee of the hall, then it's gonna be brought up again tonight?
Oh, yes. For the person?
Yeah.
Yes, that's gone through, so that'll come in there, yeah. Good? Okay, anything else, anyone? Now I have a motion to approve with all these additions.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, so the minutes, committee of the hall, April 5th. Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the whole, April 28th?
So moved.
Moved, seconded, discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. And April 28th, council meeting?
So moved.
Moved, seconded, any discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Business arising, RFP organizational review. That's you, I don't have anything. Go ahead.
Yep, so we did the RFP for the organizational review. We've had a half a dozen or so responses. And what I need this evening is a few members of council, I'm suggesting, a few members of council work with me and we, we score the proposals and bring a recommendation back. Everyone can participate if you wish, or we can do a, we can empower a ad hoc subcommittee to do that work.
Okay. I'm in.
I'm in. I think everybody should be, should be involved in this process, your worship.
All right, so you just wanna set, go ahead, CAO.
So what I'd like to do, there's a fair amount of reading involved, is we'll make copies of the, of the proposals, and we will provide you each with one, as well as a, the information from the request for proposals on how they're to be scored, and ask you to independently score, and when everybody has done that, we will have a meeting and come to a consensus on the, on the consultant.
Good. Thank you. Cell phones in the workplace policy. Go ahead.
Thank you, worship. So this, this came up a while back. We, we were in discussion about, about this topic, and we were able to source a policy that we didn't have one in place, thought we should, and so we're bringing this forward for your consideration.
Good, so what are you looking for?
Motion.
Okay.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question.
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Social media policy?
Uh, that's the same thing. Social media is, you know, everybody's lives, it seems, these days, and we didn't have a specific policy on it, so, again, we got, we received one which we thought suited our needs, and we're recommending your approval.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question.
Yep. Go ahead, Deputy.
Jeff, where did you get some of the information? I think it's good information, I was curious, I gotta find a way to email it to a couple of people, so, just wondering where you got some of the information?
Where I got these drafts? We, we have a solicitor we use on some HR matters, and this, these topics came up in discussion over, over a situation, and when she learned that we didn't have policies on these matters, she offered to provide us with some that she had within her, her files. And so these came from a solicitor, an HR lawyer that we sometimes use.
Excellent. Good. Moved and seconded, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Switch open street signatures? So we've got those in front of us. I think this was just more for information. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, Caroline, did you wanna say something? Can you get that on her? Thank you. Good stuff. And we did, just so everyone knows, we did an interview, was that today?
Yeah.
It was, it's been a long day. We did an interview this morning with CJLS, so, so it'll be on the weekend or two to help spread the word. Go ahead, Caroline.
Um, the switch open street Sunday concept, where we're gonna close down Main Street to cars and open it up to people, and really just let anything people can imagine happen in the street. As part of that, we wanted to make sure that businesses in the area that we wanted to close down would be okay with us doing so. So Frank Grant and I walked Main Street, and we went to every single business, and we dropped off material and asked for signatures, and not a single person had a problem with it, everybody was very excited. And so the sheet in front of you is all the signatures we received, there's actually more on the sheet now upstairs, more people stopped by who wanted to sign it. So we have overwhelming support.
Excellent. Good stuff. Go ahead.
And Caroline, when yourself and Frank went on your tour, did any of the shop people or people working in some of the stores on Main Street have any ideas or anything they'd like to see with the, with the idea?
Everybody had ideas. So part of the signup sheet was we asked if they wanted to be part of it and get updates and be told, you know, when, what times they can set up and when it would be happening to put their contact information on the sheet as well. So as you can see on the copy that was given to you, everybody gave their con, their contact information because they wanted to take part.
Excellent.
Nice job.
Yeah, this is, this is excellent, really exciting. Yeah, thank you, Caroline.
Maybe Caroline, you should say when the first date is, so people out there will know.
I gotta look at my calendar.
June the 19th?
June 19th, 12 to 4.
12 till 4, yep. And it goes from Cliff to Collins?
Yes.
For now?
For now. We figure if we can fill that space, then we'll, we can start expanding after that.
Right on.
Yeah.
Yep, so anybody without ideas out there, or, I know there's a lot of young people, our little entrepreneurs, that wanna set up anything from lemonade stands to everything in between.
More the merrier.
Exactly, the more the merrier. And you just have to come into the office, talk to Caroline, let her know what you're, what you're doing? Good to go. And I understand that the town covers the permits, so you don't need a permit, but you need, we need to know that you're coming in, right?
That's correct. So the town has something new called an umbrella permit for events. And basically what that is, is it's a permit where if you're holding an event, you can keep track of the vendors that you would like to partake in your event, and then submit that application to the town. So I'm gonna hold the umbrella permit for this event, and I've been taking down the vendors that wanna take part.
Perfect. So one last question, from me, anyway, I don't know if anyone else has questions, but is there a spot, is, is this on our website?
It is, I added it this morning.
Okay, good.
Yes.
So you can go to our website, townofyarmouth.ca, and where are we gonna find it?
Right on the main page, it's in Programs and Initiatives, there's a little picture, you'll see it right on the homepage, yeah.
Just in case people wanna find out more about it. Great. Good stuff, thank you. Good? Okay. C-Fest Office? C-Fest Office, sorry. CAO?
Your worship, you may have received email on this, I don't think there's anything in writing in front of you this evening. I had a call from David Oathouse, who's chairing the C-Fest, C-Fest event, and in the past, C-Fest has had an office donated, they've used with their students, and this year they're, they're looking, and he, looking for a place, and he contacted me about the Killen Building. Well, as you know, we're trying to make something else happen at the Killen Building, and I'm meeting with David and the people from the Biosphere on Tuesday on site. My thought was is, is, you know, they're, my first concern was we didn't wanna take a tenant away from, from the private sector, but they've never paid rent, so it isn't a case that, that they're looking to be able to pay. If the Biosphere people are only gonna use the, the main floor this year, then it may be possible we could accommodate them on the second floor if you wish to do that. They would be looking to start as early as next week and continue until mid-August.
Thank you, your worship. The, the CAO just covered the timeline that I was gonna ask about, because the, the C-Fest Office is not going, is not looking to, to, to occupy any, any of the space for longer than a month, anyway. Right? I'm sorry, longer than the entire summer, I'm sorry. Thank you very much for, for pointing that out. Yeah, and, and you, you cleared that out, thank you.
Good?
Are we, are we looking for a motion to, or just for informa-
No, I need direction on this, because I expect the Biosphere people are gonna be working with Parks Canada and ourselves, and hopefully we'll have something, but I expect it to only occupy the main floor, and I see David's nodding, so I think he knows more than I do. And of course, the museum will be there with their presence. C-Fest could occupy all or a portion of the second floor, and be quite accessible to the public for regular hours, and, you know, it's, it's a community use that has not typically paid a landlord, which I think I would recommend against it if they were looking for a paid situation. And of course, this would be subject to what we feel about the Biosphere's needs this year, not including the second floor, which I'd be able to confirm Tuesday.
Well, as, as you know, Jeff, David and I and Dave Solos are aware of some of the activity there, so if you need a motion to do that, I'm prepared to make a motion to allow C-Fest to occupy the second floor for the duration of what they need it for. It'd be a wonderful, wonderful activity in that building this summer.
Okay, moved and seconded. Counselor Mooney?
And I'm just gonna say that with C-Fest and with discussions you're gonna have next week, so you don't know what the Biosphere people are gonna need, right?
Pretty short for this year.
Okay, then, okay, so, but you'll have that discussion with the, with the, the group next week. Thank you.
Good place for C-Fest, for now. Okay, moved and seconded, oh, sorry, counselor?
Just a, just a word of caution, or just my thought, is that we, we make it clear that this is just this summer for now, because we don't know what next summer will bring, and when they're finished with using the facility, that they take whatever is theirs out. Okay? That's, that's just my thought, so we don't have to go through any, anything else on, on this issue, and if next year, if nothing goes on at next year, we can look at it again, so you gotta be careful about that.
So if, if the motion passes and, and it does not interfere with the Biosphere this year, we'll sign a lease, it'll be for a dollar, but the terms and conditions will be clear.
Okay. Any further discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Penalty by law amendment. Do you want it? You good? Put your light on there, solicitor. There you go.
The town was interested in having more of its offenses eligible for summary offense tickets, and which would enable, make it easier to write them by the bylaw officer. One of the requirements to have an offense eligible to be dealt with by way of a summary offense ticket is there has to be a minimum penalty, and not all town offenses have a minimum penalty, so rather than changing them each individually, the bylaws were changing the penalty bylaw to add a minimum penalty if it's not otherwise stated, so that would make all the town offenses eligible for prosecution by summary offense ticket.
So this is our bylaw enforcement officer that writes these, not the RCMP?
That's right. It's summary offense tickets under the town bylaws, not RCMP summary offense tickets.
All right. I made a phone call about the loitering today. Again. The loitering. Can't, the people aren't going down by Timbs and all those other spots, they're afraid to go. Counselor?
Thank you, your worship. Jeff, before you run off, just, just for a second, is this, is this a new, new bylaw or amended one?
Yeah, it's amended.
It's amended?
Yeah.
It was, it was a thousand? Okay, and a thousand dollars?
So...
And this, this bylaw, it can be for anything, like loitering, is, is it registered with the province? No, but we, we've been trying to get something like this for, I don't know how many years, so maybe you can explain that to me, and, and I'll ask my question.
I'm gonna have some light.
Okay, the first question, the, the part that's crossed out is the existing town penalty bylaw. The, the problem with the existing bylaws is it sets a maximum fine and not a minimum fine. So the requirements for a summary offense ticket is that there be a minimum fine. The 11875, I believe it is?
Yeah, it is. Ninety-five, yeah.
Ninety-five is set by the province, and that's currently the minimum amount for a summary offense ticket for the fine part of it. There's also court costs, which bring it to like 237 is the minimum summary offense ticket.
And that would be, okay, so that would be the, the violator's cost?
That would be the cost, yeah, of the ticket, so to speak.
Okay, so the bylaw enforcement writes six of these?
Yeah.
And like lots of other tickets and stuff, they, they never appear. So how does that work? Now, if, if you go represent the town for this 237 bucks?
The, the province streamlined the summary offense ticket process a couple of years ago, so that if people want to plead not guilty, they have to give notice to the court.
Okay.
So I would only attend if somebody actually filed something with the court indicating they wanted to plead not guilty and have a trial.
Okay.
So if nobody, if somebody gets a ticket and they do not do anything, then they'll be found guilty by the court in, in its absence, I won't even know about the ticket, there won't be any extra cost to the town or anything like that.
Okay, so once, once this ticket is, is writ, the person doesn't show up, it says it could, he could get 90 days in jail? Who, does the RCMP get involved then?
The, the 90-day in jail part of it, and also the maximum part of it, you have the ability to leave the penalty blank on a summary offense ticket, and then if you do that, you can go to the court and ask the judge to impose the penalty, but that does away with the streamlined process of what you're trying to achieve in the summary offense ticket by having the fine already set out on the ticket.
Okay, so now, the person just says, I'm not gonna bother with it, I don't really care, you ain't gonna do nothing to me. So this guy got five, five of these summary tickets, he's collecting them now, so he's got them, he's got them home, and probably puts them on eBays and sells them there, I don't know. But, so what, what's, in, in the end, what's the good of it if we don't get no, no results out of it?
Well, it's not, there are people certainly that don't, that have a series of unpaid fines, and that was a problem, it's not, if you have fines under the, like, for parking tickets, that, you have to have those paid for in order to get your license.
That's right.
When it comes time to, to renew it. Now, you know, these loitering or some other ticket wouldn't necessarily fall into that, but if you were to show up in court for some other matter and you had unpaid fines, then...
Well, that would show up?
If you had, if you showed up on, take a charge with another offense, the sheriff, part of their job is they have a list of the people that, you know, might have unpaid tickets or warrants or things like that, so they, they may end up being arrested for that, for that.
So now, does, does the bylaw enforcement officer have to go reger, register this, this, this summary offense, this, this ticket?
The, the bylaw enforcement officer, when he writes a summary offense ticket, he takes it to the provincial court, and that's in effect the registering of it, and then it's dealt with through the court system, the summary offense, or, sorry, the bylaw enforcement officer really doesn't have anything to do with it after that.
After that, so it is, it's provincially registered?
Yes.
And it goes through the court system?
That's right.
Great, thank you.
Good. Okay. Did we move it and second it? No, we didn't. Okay, you're gone, counselor.
Thank you, worship. I would make the motion to accept the amended bylaw, number 28, called the penalty bylaw. Would you like me to read it out?
For the first reading.
For first reading? Would you like me to read it out?
No, we're good.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Idling signage request. CAO?
Thank you, worship. Some people have taken note of the amount of idling that's happening in the town, and they, I think are, are...
Some?
Some people are taking notice.
Okay.
And they're enthusiastic about, about curbing it, as enthusiastic, as enthusiastic as council. We've been approached, and the request is that we permit them to put these signs up in, they're primarily thinking about in school areas, but they're basically asking people to, to not idle. So it isn't an enforcement, it is a reminder that, that it's a good thing as, as a environmentally conscious person to, to, to not idle. So some of these, they would see being installed in the street right of way, and so we would need your permission to, to allow that. But just for additional information, they do have stickers for people to, to acquire and put in their car windows to remind other drivers that, that they, they... They aren't yet, no, but that's a good idea. Yeah, so, and I would encourage you to, to grant the permission to erect these signs within the street right of way, provided that they, they work through our public works department.
Moved and seconded. Discussion.
Going to tease Jeff a little bit, you look good holding a sign up, Jeff there. Thank you.
So did they print it? Yes.
They're gonna be uniform, right? They're big, same sign.
Just like that.
Yeah. What's that? Are they off-site signage? No. Go ahead.
Jeff, the signs are, they're okay probably in the daytime, but do they have any for Russell once we're at night? Or, just a thought?
They have not produced many of them.
Okay.
And so I can pass that thought on to them. You know, again, they're thinking primarily in the school areas where it would be daytime.
Oh, okay. I thought, I, I, I thought we were going to place them in, in different, different places around town.
Well, if we're enthusiastic about it, we might help them in producing some that have the reflective treatment, that would be more visible at twilight.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't know the details about it, so...
Okay, good. So we're, do we make the motion? Danny made the motion? Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Milton Improvement Society request? So we have a request to remove the no parking sign from the easterly side of Brunswick Street. I think, I agree with them, I think it was put there because it was a school. Go ahead, CAO. Well, we have Counselor McIsaac first there.
Just a, just a quick thought. I'm, I'm, I'm agreeing with this, I agree with you, your worship, and I agree with the, the author of the letter, but also should we give this to the, refer this to the traffic authority? We can pause it here tonight, but with the recommendation from the traffic authority, Jeff, that's my question to you. Or could we just do it here without going through the traffic authority, which I don't know we should or not, so. It's a traffic, traffic issue.
Yeah. The traffic authority would have, would have ultimate authority on it, but I think your guidance would be, would be appreciated on this one. The street is certainly wide enough to have parking on it, that's one of the widest, widest streets in town. But as long as I have the microphone, I'll also add this, is that there is, there is a bus stop there, or at least the bus does stop there for three schools, for, for students for three schools, so at certain times of certain days, you know, the, a bus will be looking to park there, but I don't anticipate, you know, it being a, a, an area that's gonna receive a lot of parking congestion, so that shouldn't be an issue.
Should we have our staff look at that then, do you think, perhaps? Chad or somebody like that, or? I mean, I, I'm, I'm good with it. If, if you're good with it, I'll make the motion that we, we accept the letter that was presented to us this evening, and on the recommendation from our CEO.
Yeah, I think, I think what I, if, if you recommend it to the traffic authority, I'll, I'll discuss with him maybe some signage that indicates that there is a bus stop there, certain hours, certain days.
Okay. Well, I, I'll agree, I'll make a motion that we accept the letter from, from the author and ask our traffic authority to check into it on the recommendation from the CAO.
Moved and seconded, any more discussion?
Question.
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Fort McMurray support? So we had a couple of things, I sent out an email with a motion, but then UNSM sent out a note, and they are collecting funds. So depends on how we wanna do that. Either way, it's gonna get doubled or whatever it is.
Can we refer this to budget instead of making our decisions tonight, see where we are? Budget's gonna be next week anyway, I would think, and they ain't going no worse. They've already got 79,000 now, 79 million in their fund, as up, as up to this evening, which the government is gonna double, gonna give, double that again. So we refer this to budget unless the council wishes to give a number out. We usually refer things like this to budget.
Yeah, and I, I agree with Counselor McIsaac, but sometimes municipal government and things happen around your constituency, your town, your municipality, your province, or the country that are beyond ordinary circumstances, like fires, the floods, the ice storm in Quebec a couple of years ago, and I think, I'll make a motion that the Town of Yarmouth donate $1,000 towards the Fort McMurray Support Fund and send that to the Union of Nova Scotia Municipalities. I think if something happened in Nova Scotia, and I think Counselor McIsaac, you're right on, and we're gonna have another thing a little later tonight, I think...
Chamber.
The chamber thing is some, but I think this is something a little different, something unique, and something that my neighbor, two or three doors down on the left, I yelled at him across the road, "Welcome back home," and I know some people are going back out west, but I think it'd be a good gesture on the Town of Yarmouth, and we do have people that work out west that send money back home to support their families.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Nova Scotia International Student Program presentation request. So John McKinnon looks after that for the Tri-County Regional School Board, and he wants to come in and present to us. So I'm looking for a motion for...
On both at the next available date for the presentation, your worship?
Good. Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, the bulk price for compost sales. I didn't have anything on that either.
No, sorry.
That's okay.
So in 2014, we increased our, our price for bulk sales of compost from $25 a ton up to $35, a ton or yard. Yeah, either way, we, we increased it from $25 per unit up to 35, and what happened? We, we...
The chamber thing is some, but I think this is something a little different, something unique. And something that my neighbor, two or three doors down on the left, I yelled at him across the road, "Welcome back home." And I know some people are going back out west, but I think it'd be a good gesture on the town of Yarmouth. And we do have people that work out west that send money back home to support their families.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Questions.
Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary. Motion carried. Nova Scotia International Student Program Presentation Request. So John McKinnon looks after that for the Tri-County Regional School Board and he wants to come in and present to us. So I'm looking for a motion for...
On both at the next available date for the presentation, worship.
Good. Moved and seconded. Discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary. Motion carried. Okay, the bulk price for compost sales. I didn't have anything on that either.
No, sorry.
That's okay.
So, in 2014, we increased our price for bulk sales of compost from $25 a ton up to $35, a ton or yard. Yeah, either way, we increased it from $25 per unit up to 35. And what happened? We expected we would just make more money. But what actually happened is we lost some customers, that they sought other soil amendments other than our compost because of the price. It is important to our operations that we're able to move the finished compost, that we're able to have it move off-site. Otherwise, we get a, say, a backlog of compost and it becomes an operational issue. So, staff are recommending that council reconsider and reduce the price back down to the $25, because at that price, we were not moving huge amounts, but we were moving more than we're moving right now. So, cubic yard. Sorry, cubic yard.
Councillor Dennis?
I'll make a motion that we put the price back to $25 for the compost.
Right. Moved and seconded.
Good.
You good?
What happens if we reduce it back to 20, say? Is that too much of a reduction? Thank you. No, that's right. And I totally understand. I'm okay. I'm just throwing out something a little bit different to cause a moment of reflection.
We don't obviously fully understand the price elasticity of compost, but we're learning.
It's all good. Moved and seconded. Question's been called. You need to stop while you're ahead. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary. Motion carried. Okay. Committee of the whole. Deputy, you're on.
I move that the town of Yarmouth rename its annual bursary to the Town of Yarmouth Kenlangel Memorial Bursary.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary. Motion carried. Before you go on, deputy, I have a question. CAO, do we, do we do a call-out for applications?
That's done through the high school.
Okay, so they will...
They advertise through the high school. They take care of all the applications.
Okay, good.
And they do the decision.
Because that's next month.
They're the criteria for it.
Good. Okay. Sorry. Go ahead, deputy.
I move that Jed Hershey be granted veteran status.
Second.
Moved and seconded by everyone.
Questions?
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary. Motion carried.
I move that the Mariners Centre budget be referred to the town's budget.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Questions?
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary. Motion carried.
I move that copies of any correspondence regarding ATVs be provided to the municipality of Yarmouth.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Questions?
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary. Motion carried.
I move that the requests to participate in the Canada 150 Mosaic project be referred to budget.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Questions?
Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary. Motion carried.
I move that council support the proposed changes to the building code regulations as these changes will support local entrepreneurs in our community. Should I read, your worship and Jeff, the two paragraphs below that?
Okay. Okay. As recommended by staff, goes in the motion and then the rest will be captured. Yep, good. So we're good.
Okay.
Yep. Moved. Did somebody second it? Seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary. Motion carried.
I move that the tender for the Brown and Cliff Streets sewer separation project be deferred until additional information is received by the CAO.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary. Motion carried.
I move that the contract for the wayfinding signs be awarded to the lowest tender, day-night signs of Dartmouth, Nova Scotia, for the fabrication and installation of the wayfinding signage in the amount of $191,296.60 plus HST.
Well, seconded.
Seconded. Go ahead.
And since I wasn't here at the last committee of the whole meeting, your worship, how many solicitations or how many invitations to tender did we have for this, for this one? Three or four?
Three or four, yeah.
Good. Deputy? What's that? Oh.
Questions?
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary. Motion carried.
I move that staff be directed to negotiate with Canada Post to determine the best location for community mailboxes.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's try that again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay. Well, I only got one at a time, three times. I didn't hear anything. We had one day. Yep, we had one day. Go ahead.
Okay, well, the question, if you didn't know, the mailboxes, they wanted to put them up by the RCMP, where the old RCMP station was. Were you here for that? No. And so, they're looking to put them up on the upper one or the lower one. So we asked Jeff to be working with the post office people to do that. That's what this is about. I thought that's why you were pressing your mic.
You okay now?
Well, just holding our good liberal government to their electric plans of door-to-door mail delivery, that's all.
Oh, okay. Yeah, this was the other boxes that were already there. Okay. Deputy? Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, we voted, didn't we? Okay, go ahead, deputy.
I move that the municipalities amend our tax sharing agreement to provide for the sharing of future tax revenues from properties jointly held by the parties at the time the initial agreement was signed and sold to a third party.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary. Motion carried.
I move that permission be granted for the painting of a red carpet in Elma Square with the understanding that the Friends of the Art Gallery will maintain the property.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary. Motion carried.
I move that staff be directed to provide a recommendation to the committee of the whole on the PACE program.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary. Motion carried.
Number 13, similar to 12. I move that staff be directed to provide additional information to council prior to the next committee of the whole meeting on the PACE program.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary. Motion carried. Citizen Advisory Committees, Planning Advisory. That's you, deputy. Got a couple there, three, I think.
Your Planning Advisory Committee has been very busy over the past year or so. And we're nearing the end of our process and we hope to complete the process within the next month or two. So, two items. Number one, unrelated to the MPS and LUBI, move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider and if deemed advisable, amend the land use bylaw to rezone PID number 90213026 from institutional I-1 to secondary commercial C-3 as outlined in Caroline's report.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary. Motion carried.
Secondly, I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider and if deemed advisable, amend the land use bylaw to rezone 26 Willow 9 and 2nd, 9 and 16 Second Street and 24 Elma Street from residential I-1 and I-2 to downtown commercial C-1 as outlined in Caroline's report.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary. Motion carried.
As I mentioned a second ago, the third item, I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider and if deemed advisable, amend the municipal planning strategy and the land use bylaw as outlined in the review.
Moved and seconded. We should add and then have a party afterwards. Hey, Caroline? We'll need to celebrate. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary. Motion carried.
I think I did this back in 1988, your worship.
Probably here from 2088, too.
You'll be around for the next one, too. That's good. Okay, so reports for information. Any questions for committee chairs, anyone? We good? Additions. 11A, request from Sarah Corning Society, re-letter support. So Sandra Finney sent me the email that's attached and I'm just looking for a motion to send that letter.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Question's been called? Yep, go ahead.
And she didn't, she said the location, but she didn't mention where. She's talking about a location.
Okay. Wait a minute. There's one location out. There was a, there was a location in Shebode, I think.
Yeah.
But the other, don't hold me to this, but for some reason, I'm thinking in front of Sunset Terrace or something like that.
Okay, good.
There was something like that. But, yeah, I think they're looking for the support and then they'll let us know what they're gonna do and if we need it.
Interesting story, interesting lady. Do they still have the exhibit at the museum?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It's worth, well worth a visit to go to the museum, have a look.
It is. Good stuff. Okay, moved.
Your worship?
Somebody second it? No. His light's just still on. Yep. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary. Motion carried. We've got, okay, councillor Mooney, 11B.
Thank you, worship. Make your motion. We send letters of condolence to the Surratt family and to Tina Camo on the passing of her father-in-law, Henry Surratt. If I have a second or just maybe a couple of words?
Yep, go right ahead.
Tina did an excellent article on Henry. Had lots of opportunities over the last several years to play golf with Henry and have a conversation. He was always thinking. He was always tinkering. He was inquisitive. He was interesting. He was unique. He thought about Yarmouth even though he spent all his life in Pickney's Point. He thought Yarmouth on a regional basis. He loved his family. He loved his church and he loved his profession, which was the lobster industry. So, I'll miss him. I know Tina will miss him and he had a great send-off yesterday, so.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary. Motion carried. Request for proposals waterfront for information. Yeah, it is. It is. Okay. We'll have to have a chat with that, boot that after. Vacant buildings bylaw amendment. CAO?
Your worship, at the last committee of the whole meeting, I asked council if it would be agreeable to you to have the bylaw enforcement officer actually administer those requests for the boarding up of buildings rather than have to bring them to council. And you had agreed, so this is the amendment that would enable that. So, if you're agreeable, approval of first reading would be appropriate.
Moved and seconded. Her first reading. Discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary. Motion carried. Tender onsite septic tank cleaning. CAO?
It's technically a water utility issue. Perhaps we should convene a water utility meeting at the end of this.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No, let's do that. Just remind me. What's that?
Water utility.
Water utility after. Okay. And the returning officer re-numeration for information, and I can just read the letters probably easier, it's sent to the CAO. This is to advise council and the residents of the town of Yarmouth that enumeration for the upcoming municipal election will begin May 31st at the latest and will be completed by the 10th of June 2016. And if this could be announced at your town meeting tonight, it would be appreciated as we want residents to be aware the election process is beginning. And it's signed by Marie Atkinson, our returning officer.
Can we put that on the website?
Let's say, yep, we should do that. CAO?
So, in addition, I want to mention this because this is a bit of a change. In addition, while we are enumerating, we are going to ask people if they'd like to opt in to being included in the database for our emergency notification system. And so they will be asked not only to provide information for the election, but we will have additional information for them requesting their personal contact information for our emergency notification system. And so, we'll be leaving information with them in case there's any confusion. They'll have a number to call that they can clarify and if they, if they don't, didn't understand or they want to be removed, they can be removed. But it'll be completely voluntary, but we're gonna take the opportunity as long as we have people at the door to try and make best use of that interaction.
Go ahead.
Reinforce what Jeff has said and make sure that Tina is aware and gets information out. Thank you.
Tina's got it. Tina had it before you said it, Jeff.
Okay, I'm looking for approval of the invoices.
So moved.
Okay, bye everybody. Date of next meeting is June the 9th. That just seems like a, that's Vera's opening. And Nadel Day. There's three or four things going on that day. That's good, okay? And, okay, so we did the in-camera, a motion to adjourn. Okay? Oh, who does? Oh, sorry.
I was just trying to get you. Jeff, is there any indication, you have any indication about when our next round of budget meetings, budget meetings are going to be?
All right, so we had tentatively set a capital budget meeting, or I shouldn't say tentatively set, we had set it for today, but Jerry and I were both away at an asset management conference and so that didn't make any sense. So I asked Linda to cancel that. It definitely will be next week, probably towards the later part of next week. Jerry is away, I believe, on Monday as well, so I'll try and look at the calendar and pick something later in the week.
Okay. Sooner than later, then, right?
Yeah, we gotta get her done.
And you'll send us out an email, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, worship.
Go ahead, councillor.
I just have a stupid question here, but we approve invoices, but as council, we never see those invoices. So we're approving something that we don't even know anything about.
So, councillors, councillors who are our committee chairs and the mayor and the deputy mayor, sign off on the invoices and sign the checks. They are available to you. If you wish to see them, we aren't going to bring them to the council meeting, but it's just, it allows us to do the monthly business. The auditors know how it works and they like the fact that you make that motion every month. But if you're curious about the specifics, by all means, come into the office.
Okay. Thank you.
Good? Okay. So, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay. And deputy, do you want to chair the water utility? Do you want me to just do this? Do you want me to do it?
I'll make a motion, your worship, we accept the lowest tender for the septic pumping in Lake George area.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Questions?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yes, please. Go ahead.
Yeah, just so everyone is aware of what we do there, so within the watershed, we have a program, and we've had it for a number of years now, where we will pump residents whose septic field is within the Lake George watershed. We will pump every three years their septic tank, free of charge. The town pays for it, okay? And the reason is, is because that represents a risk to the water. And in order to ensure that that risk is mitigated to a certain degree, it's a voluntary program. They have to agree to allow us to have the company come on the property and do it. And some don't, frankly. Some don't take us up on that free offer, which causes me some concern. But those that do take us up on it get that... those that do take us up on it get that little bit of a benefit, there are restrictions on the use of their land because they're within the watershed, so this is one financial benefit that they get back.
It is, and it's not connected with anything else. No, I mean, as soon as you say Lake George, everybody flies into a panic. Okay, deputy?
Just a question of Jeff, have we been doing this, Jeff, or is this a new item?
So this is at least, at least the third time that we've done it, and I suspect we've done it longer than that.
And has it been yearly or is this just the third time in the past?
So this goes back at least nine years, maybe twelve, fifteen or more.
Okay.
Good. Was it seconded? Moved and seconded, discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor. Contrary, motion carried, motion to adjourn. Good.